We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Seven o'clock. We do legitimately need a note taker. We don't have a note taker for tonight.
Well, I guess you can always rewatch it, right? I'll do my best.
Thank you, Caitlin. You appreciate it.
Yep. We're going to put an ad in the round town. We thought we had somebody, but it did not work out, so. We'll put an ad in the round town, and I'm sure we will have a taker. All right. Let's do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any public hearings? Anybody for a public hearing? No? Our audience is bundled. Okay, so we'll move on to approval of minutes. We have Tuesday, September 19th. I'll make a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from September 19th, 2023.
Okay. For the purposes of discussion. I just wanted to clarify two points. Jackie, they come from the reports from the Gilmontague and from the tech school. It says, and this may be just a loss in translation, but it says there are 918 students. Thank you.
In the Gilmontague, yes, that's correct. That's a while, it's pre-K group, so.
Okay.
So that includes the town of Gil and while the Sheffield, Kilcrest, and Great Falls Middle School, and.
Oh, okay. That's what I was, I thought that maybe, but since you were just reporting on the middle and high school, then I thought maybe that was just a typo, but I understand what you're saying, all of the district. And then the other one was just in the tech report, the 40 students on co-op, that just seemed low.
That's because it's only seniors.
Yep.
Juniors don't get to go out until spring.
Until spring.
The spring.
Yeah, but there's 152 seniors. Only 40 of them are.
Only 40 at the start of the year. Some seniors don't, or they wait until the middle of the year to go out and go off. Not everyone does it.
Okay.
It's a match between business that wants, you know, and the students.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks for clarifying those two things. Does anybody else want to make any other adjustments to the minutes? Or does anybody want to make adjustments to the minutes? We didn't adjust anything.
Okay.
I just want to make sure they're down there still looking at it.
Yeah. Were you going to say something or no?
Um, you can if you want.
No, I'm good.
Is that a yes or no?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Warrants. Do you want to read the ones on the agenda?
Um, no, I don't think we need to read them, but I am wondering, can we like label them instead of having, like, can we put like payroll or something instead of just 107, 108?
I think that's payroll, and then the other side's vendor.
Yes.
Well, the first column, first three columns is payroll, and the second set of three columns is the accounts payable, but we can label them.
Is just, okay, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean payroll. I can see that they were the way.
Sorry. I didn't know if you read it as one.
That was my fault. I misspoke. I didn't mean payroll. I meant the vendor ones, if we could just clarify what those are.
If it doesn't easily do that, then that's okay, too. I just didn't know if we could easily kind of say what those things were, but if we can't.
You can swap out vendor for accounts payable, the term. That would.
Is it, is it easy to say that one whole, like, 1007 is one vendor, or is that too many vendors to try and put a name to?
It's an entire warrant, so it's a bunch of vendors.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. So how would, is there a way to label it, or no, not really?
Not if we're just labeling the warrants. It would be an entire report.
Okay. Okay. That's okay, then. Okay, so we have the warrants here. Want to make a motion in a second, we can approve the warrants?
I'll move in a second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thanks. Gifts? Do we have any gifts? How about grants?
So we received a rural aid notification today. It technically is not a grant. It's rural aid, but I did ask for clarity from Michelle Griffin, who works under Robert O'Donnell at DESI. And because we will have to report the rural aid funds as a state grant expenditure on the E O Y R or end of year report, Michelle said to report our rural aid funds as a grant, even though it technically is not. So we received notification that Irving will receive $35,903.49 of rural aid.
Excellent.
Thank you. Why the 43 cents?
Forty-nine cents. Forty-nine cents. Get the, get every penny. How does that compare to last year? Do you know?
Yep. Last year Irving received, there's lots of pages.
I have that number, Jennifer. $12,538.90, so it's a sizable increase.
Wow. Yeah, three of the four Union 28 districts received rural aid this year.
And do you have a sense of what that money's going to be used for?
Not right yet, no. And there's, there's less parameters than other grant spending. They prefer that you use it, but it's not a requirement to support district operation with priority given to efforts to increase regional collaboration, consolidation, or other strategies to improve long-term operational efficiency and effectiveness.
And when will we actually get the money?
We will make the first payment within the next few weeks and distribute the remaining funds later in the year.
And that has to be used up by the.
That's as definitive as DESI got.
And that typically is used by the end of the school year, like this fiscal year?
Yes. So we need a vote to accept rural aid.
Yep. All right. Do you have a motion in a second?
I'll move. I'll make a motion to accept the money from, what is it called?
Rural aid.
Rural aid.
Second. I want to do your second. Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Gilmontague? Report of the Gilmontague representative.
So the Gilmontague School Committee met remotely this last week. The contract with Unit A was settled, and they are working towards settling with Unit C. They anticipate that will happen in the next couple of weeks. They've started working on the fiscal '25 budget, and basically most of the meetings are going over the school improvement plan for all the schools, including the secondary school. I did bring up the question about the article in the Montague reporter where they were losing their last math teacher. I got chapped on for asking about it at the end of the superintendent's report, but they answered the question anyways. And they are advertising and they are anticipating, they are hopeful that they will have someone in place with the staff, actually, at least one math teacher on staff. They're still down one, and it's also my understanding they're losing science teacher.
Is that the middle school or the base school?
I'm not, I'm not sure. It wasn't, there wasn't clarity, and I forgot what was in the article, but it was up at the secondary level. One of the school committee members, I believe, was Mark, had emailed me and asked me about enrollment at the secondary level, so I asked that question. So there is a total of 68 students in the Gilmontague school region that come from the town of Irving. Five of them are school choice at the elementary level. There is two in Gil, one in second, and one in fifth. Two in Sheffield, that's a second grader and a third grader. Kilcrest has one first grader. Great Falls Middle School has 32, one sixth grader from Irvingville's over there. There are 10 seventh graders and 21 eighth graders. And at the Charles Falls High School, there are 31 students, five ninth graders, five 10th graders, eight 11th graders, 12 12th graders, and then there's one special education out of district placement, for a total of 68 students. And that was pretty much the update on the Gilmontague report. Do you want me to go into the, okay. So I was unable to make the tech school.
This is the report of the Franklin County Tech School, just everybody hung out.
So I was unable to make the Franklin County Tech School meeting. It was last Wednesday, and I had a work commitment. However, there, they were, on the agenda, they were finalizing the contracts for the aviation building and finishing up the vet building and that sort of thing. It was most of it. There were some small policy changes, nothing or shattering or anything like that, just cleaning up some old language. And I did ask about the enrollment there as well. So we have 34 students going to Charles, Franklin County Tech School, which is up from the 28th from last year. There are five ninth graders, 10 eighth graders, nine 11th graders, and 12 12th graders, I think, same number of 12th graders. But that is a total of 34.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks. Is there a coordinator or a teacher associate?
You have things to share. Associations are excited to have some former teachers return to the association. Very happy to have them moving Stepbury and now Kristen Building, who used to teach 12 years ago, as a career professional, so excited about that as an association. The staff has been working on culture building with our new pinchroom principal, David Crane, and that has been going well, and we are excited about continuing that, because we are able to work more with that. So that has been great. We do have the reports for what you're judging, and we're wondering if when the budget is made out for your new school, if actual positions could be listed out. Like right now, there's mine, and it was not going to be mine, but it's listed as regular education teacher, special education teacher, specialist. We'd love to get some clarity on that, because I think, and you probably do as well, I know that in previous times, previous years, you were told like there is a position for the L S C, or there's a position for this or that, and we'd love to see if that's actually listed in there. Does that make sense, or could I clarify that, especially?
Just job titles, not necessarily what everyone, individual person is making.
No, not names, whatever issue, but just job titles, so that there's clarity, because I know last year we were talking back and forth about certain positions, and you were under the impression that like there was a position only for the learning support center, but, you know, we don't know that unless they list it out. So we thought that would add clarity to the life process, so that would be helpful. And I guess lastly, we would just like to point out that there are two folks that are not here tonight, one is Principal David Crane, and the other is your note taker, Brittany Minnick, who had been here for, I don't know how many years doing that, has resigned after your last meeting. She can speak for herself, but couldn't just point out how that went down, and also how our principal was treated personally, so we felt like she should have mentioned that. That's it. Thank you.
I wasn't here. I wasn't here.
Okay. Collaborative Educational Services report?
Yes, that's me. Okay, just doing both. So I attended the last meeting on, I don't have the date, it's on the, let me see, September 27th, I believe. Yes. So it was, our last meeting was September 27th. It was a mix of virtual and in-person, so it's nice that they allow that option. It was the first meeting back over the summer, so there was a lot of restructuring and a lot of voting on who the new members are, what their roles are, very similar to how we start our meetings here at the beginning of the year, so there was a lot of conversation around that. And to make it even, because there are representatives from Franklin County and Hampshire County that are all part of those meetings for those roles, they have one person in a role, if they're from Franklin County, then the other person in that role has to be from Hampshire County and vice versa. So they did all of that. Then they also are going to start sending executive summary updates for school committees, so we got that, and I will email that out to everyone, and it's just basically a quick synopsis of what's going on to keep everyone informed. So I won't read it word for word, but they have done a lot of work to their 97 Holly Street building in North Hampton. They're redoing carpets, painting, floorwork, making that all, all of those improvements. They are, they have openings for an H R, for an H R Resource Director. They have an opening for a CES Language Access Coordinator, and they were just sharing their posting list, so if there's anyone looking, can check out the collaborative. They have some openings going on. They have their special education institute setting, so they started sharing about that, and they're serving currently 89 students during their extended year program. That was held over the summer at DMH with DYS and the county houses of correction. They, I might have to take that. They gave updates about their Mount Tom Academy. They also gave updates about their assistive tech center that they have, which is run by Janine, and she was presenting for them back it up and how to prepare for A C-related emergencies in partnership with another woman named Lauren. So they are working on that and presenting on assistive technology and training. They have their HECC Academy program, so that has gotten off to an enthusiastic start. Their enrollment currently stands at 21 students, and they are building on last year's Green Team efforts by increasing their composting and reuse practices. So at the HECC Academy, they receive a reused recycle grant from Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection that will enable them to replace much of their disposable silverware cups, plates, and have them be all reusable. They have a workforce development program, so their STEAM internships are winding down for both of their STEAM programs that they offered over the summer. They had 65 interns working at local hospitals, businesses, and university laboratories. And they are offering a wide variety of their CES early childhood programming, so they have resumed all of their CFCE communities, which have playgroups and parent educational workshops. I think that was about it. Just making sure I didn't miss anything. Yeah. So a lot of just updates on how summer went, how they're wrapping up their programming from there, just regrouping and reassigning roles, and then next meeting, I believe, is in November. So that is the CES report. Thank you. And is.
Did they talk about whether they've done any work on the HECC Academy yet? They were, they were also going to be working on that.
Um, I.
That was going to be a much bigger project, but I don't know if they had.
I know they were talking about it, but I don't think they've started yet. And they didn't add that in here.
Okay.
But I can keep my ears open at the next one.
All right. I don't believe we have a regionalization update yet.
No. Did someone reach out to them?
Um, I think. Jen, were you going to reach out to them?
I didn't, but I can, yes.
Okay. I thought, yep, that'd be great.
Just to follow to see if it has to be.
Capital planning, Jen, is there anything to report?
Yes. The Finance Director, Caitlin, and Eric and I met this past Wednesday. Caitlin presented the 10-year plan of all the different capital projects that would most likely be done in the next 10 years. Some of the forefront ones, obviously, is the HVAC. Caitlin, you got approval, preliminary approval for the grant?
Preliminary approval. We're waiting on final approval from DESI.
So we have.
When do you think that might be? Do they give you any indication as to when that was? That they get final approval?
No.
No?
So I believe 90, or I think it was 9100 would be for the feasibility study, and then the rest would be towards the grant. Some of the other projects that were on the forefront were building wide cameras. There isn't any funding for it currently, but it had been brought up by our tech director, Tom Smith. One of the ideas, too, with the HVAC system, Eric had mentioned maybe possibly doing mini splits, and our head custodian, Eric Harris, was going to look into that, just to kind of get a ballpark of an idea on the price of that. And also, that kind of leads into the idea of getting a new roof, because before even doing the HVAC, we would have to do a new roof, and that is obviously a very large undertaking. So those are all things to think about, and I shared all this information with the capital planning committee at the town hall as well.
How about the shades?
Yep, there's still, that was on the, on that as well. There is $30,000 for that, and that is, that is one of the projects that is the forefront for this year as well.
Yeah, but there was talk of looking into seeing if $30,000 was adequate.
Right. I don't think that that would be an appropriate price nowadays, since it was appropriate.
We're still waiting on some quotes.
So you've reached out, and you're just waiting for quotes to come back?
I would have to check in with Eric, but we have, we're starting the process of getting some quotes on the, on the shades.
Okay. And what about the leak in the skylight?
That would have to do with the roof project.
Okay.
Jackie has a question.
I was just wondering.
Can you go up to the? Thanks.
Just two things. It was hard to hear you when the furnace thing was going on, so if you can speak up, but is it.
Talking a total roof repair, or are you talking small repair for the roof?
What we're looking into is whether they're, we're capable of.
Whether they're able to do some small repairs.
Whether we're going to have to try to find funding for an entire new roof. And that's what we're calling in and trying to see what sort of, what we're, what situation we're looking at right now.
Would the Massachusetts Building Assistance Fund be able to offset some of the cost of the roof? They do do roofs.
Potentially, but it has, the roof has to be over, I think, 30 years old at this point, is what they're.
The last threshold was 30 years, because Shute's Berry had been working on that for eight years, and they kept moving the threshold up.
We're close, aren't we?
Twenty-five or four?
But that's not etched in stone. Every year that line shifts, so we don't really know.
Okay. I was just wondering, as a mechanism to offset some of the cost, if we were pursuing the, they have to come out and look at it and see if you're eligible and that sort of thing.
I don't even think they've sent any RFPs out.
So last year, they did not do any accelerated repairs, and.
Correct.
When we tried for the prior four years, three, four years for Shute's Berry, it was 26, 27, 28 years old, and the age the roof had to be kept climbing also. And so with an older roof and a building, we were unable to receive any MSBA funding.
Right. I was just wondering if you were going to pursue that avenue, just to see if it was, because, I mean, we have a new governor now, there's a little more support, we've got an increase in the rural aid, things might have changed politically, and maybe we would be eligible. That's all. It was just a way to get some funds that wouldn't be a cost to the taxpayer.
So is that something you could look into, to just, just see where you're at?
Well, we always look into MSBA when we're doing any kind of building repair. The RFPs have not come out, so once they do, we can look into that, if they're doing any accelerated repair projects. Last year, they only did new buildings.
Good question. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Superintendent's report?
Yep, I have three bullets. Unit 28 Professional Development and DESI. The first part under Unit 28 is relative to the operational efficiency study results. That was shared the entire report, but I'll just briefly share some data regarding that. The primary goal of that study, of course, was to identify and quantify operational areas that could benefit from shared services and our heightened efficiency in practice. The data analysis that was done, which was a two-pronged analysis combining interviews and review of expenditure and procurement data, led to a result of a lack of staff at central office, singular governing policies across the district, and unified operating standards. And the single most influential factor that was stifling operations in our district was the organizational structure of Union 28 itself. The recommendations from the report, some of which I will share tonight, were bolstering leadership staff to oversee operational departments, implementing a single bargaining unit contract, implementing a unified policy manual, a regionalization study to provide clarity of both the pros and cons of an elementary district, as well as a path to adopting such a structure, and/or regionalizing with feeder districts. Also hiring additional qualified leadership staff in the area of food service, facilities, maintenance, information technology, and human resources, which would support timely and critical oversight. The final conclusion was, without truly considering a fully regionalized structure, the individualized nature of Union 28 would likely continue to hinder efforts in both operational and instructional areas. As I said, that was shared across the committees. Professional development so far has included a union-wide safety professional development with Jim Carmichael from the Franklin County Sheriff's Department, as well as training from CES around culturally responsive pedagogy, and some work around literacy with our curriculum director. And lastly, DESI has released the 2023 MCAS results. They were released on the 19th of September. They were released on the nineteenth of September. It did show statewide continued academic recovery from the pandemic. Overall, results are still lower than they were in 2019. However, results statewide in English Language Arts and Math were level or improved in all grades as compared to 2022. In math, the percentage of students scoring meeting or exceeding expectations increased by two percentage points in grades three to eight. And in English Language Arts or ELA, the scores increased in 2023 as compared to 2022. However, science scores statewide decreased slightly in 2023.
One of the things I remember the person talking about who gave that report on the operational efficiencies was that they discovered that some schools were not either putting things out to bid. I remember her talking about the lunch programs, not putting, not using state, I don't know, state procurement prices for milk and things like that. I'm wondering if the, you and the principals have had any conversations about, you know, reaching out to those departments and encouraging them to do...
Yes, Caitlin works with the food service directors, the principals directly work with them as well. We've had some issues with quality of product from some of our food service vendors, but we will continue to look at the state bid list. But the final statement from the Collins Center was that although centralized and organized purchasing would be more advantageous to gain economies of scale, the financial impact would be immaterial, based on a long data analysis from that. Caitlin?
Caitlin does use the collaborative for educational procurement system.
And she is following all the procurement needs for food service.
Great. And how about in the maintenance department?
We don't typically have maintenance needs over ten thousand dollars. We'd have to follow the procurement responsibilities. Anything that we have will be a capital project.
And then lastly, you reported on NCAS, but I think if I heard you right, you phrased it as statewide. How about specifically Irving?
I don't have that data. I certainly can have Lindsay or the principal come and share that at some future meeting, if you would like that.
Yeah, I think that would make more of an impact to us than statewide, although it's interesting statewide. I think we're curious about Irving specifically.
It's always good to look at the statewide data first and then get the second flush of the local data, so I can talk to our school, our district curriculum director, and see if she would be able to present some of that data relative to MCAS at Irving.
Great, maybe we can put that on the November agenda.
I'll see what her schedule is, and if not November, then maybe December.
Director of Finance?
So, sorry. The end-of-year reports, the reports were due to the state on February, or Friday, September twenty-ninth. Ours was submitted on time, and I emailed a copy to everyone this morning. I will need the committee to vote to allow the chair to sign the end-of-year certification statement, unless there are further questions about the report.
You want to do that now, or do you just want to finish your report, and then we can do that?
You can do that now, just because otherwise I might forget, and then I have to come back the next meeting.
Okay. So we need a motion and a second to authorize me to sign off on that report. Do you have the report with you?
I have it digitally.
I mean...
Oh, the statement?
Yeah.
I don't, but I have it in my office, if you want to do it after the meeting. Okay.
No, we have to vote on it this meeting, because you have deadlines to meet. We couldn't wait, because I just haven't had a chance to look at it. I mean, I'm sure we're going to go ahead and prove it, I just haven't had a chance.
It was submitted on time, but typically you submit it by the deadline, and then you have your school committee vote, and then they sign it at the next meeting.
Oh, I don't have to sign it until the November meeting, is that what you're saying?
Well, to the meeting after we've submitted it. You don't have to vote on it tonight, if you don't want to.
Caitlin has a due date to submit it without the...
Okay. So there's...
Yeah, I'd like to be able to look it over to the next meeting, if that's okay.
Yep, I agree. That's fine with me. I thought it was pressing that we got that signed and put in.
So that's the FY twenty-three end-of-year report.
So we'll put that on to the November agenda.
The FY twenty-four Improving Ventilation Air Quality Grant update. DSE has given us preliminary approval for the two-hundred-thousand-dollar IVAQ grant. Once final approval is received, we can move forward with a feasibility study. The school roof update, which we talked a little bit about, we met last week to discuss the roof and other capital improvements. We identified that the roof is the main priority. Our head custodian, Eric Harris, is in the process of finding someone who can come assess the state of the roof and inform next steps. We also discussed insulation of mini splits in the building, which Eric has arranged for Jamrog to come get us a quote sometime this week, and we would have it soon. Special education transportation, we received confirmation that the vehicle went over to the upfitter Wednesday of last week, and the dealership will let us know when it is ready to be delivered. The next steps are for the school committee to approve the job description, and then post for driver and substitutes.
So we don't approve the job description? That's the principal and the superintendent work together on that job description?
No, so the job description is actually under the contract with our transportation coordinator, and so he's providing the job description, and then we are looking at it, reviewing it, and deciding whether it's, you know, what modifications we may make for, to make it appropriate for this, for Irving, and then it goes to the school committee. But primarily it is...
Any job descriptions we checked with DSE have to be approved by school committee?
We are not the hiring authority, though, you are.
Any job descriptions have to be approved by the school committee, based on advice from our legal counsel.
Okay, and any new positions also, as part of our policy.
Well, let us know when you have it all set, and we will look at it.
Well, that would be the contractor we're working with. Part of his summary of duties is the job description. Caitlin, is that correct?
Yes. He's provided a job description. In fact, I just sent it to you again today, but it will need to be modified for Irving's needs, so you will have to have some input on that, so that it fits Irving's needs.
And then we'll have to post for driver and substitutes. Also, the transportation consultant is also looking at the policy manual, is creating a policy manual, and some other components around the job. State rural aid, we mentioned earlier, the state came out with a rural aid distribution this morning. Irving is seizing, is seeing a sizable increase in the amount of rural aid they're receiving, the amounts over the last four years. So at FY twenty-one, it was seven thousand six hundred fifty-four dollars and thirty-six cents. FY twenty-two, nine thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars and forty-seven cents. FY twenty-three, twelve thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety cents. And then for FY twenty-four, thirty-five thousand nine hundred three dollars and forty-nine cents. We're really grateful for that increase. Union Twenty-Eight budget update, the budget and personnel subcommittee met on October tenth before the joint supervisory committee meeting. The subcommittee voted to accept the FY twenty-five Union Twenty-Eight budget and passed it along to the joint supervisory committee, who also voted to accept the budget. District allocations were calculated after the October one enrollments came in, and even since earlier, when I gave you the allocation, because we have a snapshot of the October first, but because it is very early in the budget season, we don't have those numbers certified yet, and there was one student change over four districts. So Irving went from a, last year, from twenty-five point zero zero percent allocation to twenty-five point zero one percent allocation, increase of point zero one percent allocation for FY twenty-five, and that number could change until the October first count is certified. This year, the allocations are based on, so two years ago, they voted on a five-year rolling average, so, and every year, we increase that until we get to the five years. So this year's is based on FY twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four enrollments. Next year, it'll be twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five enrollments, then twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six enrollments, and then finally, it'll start to roll into five-year rolling average. I have some of the expenditures to date. Contracted services admin, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-four cents to lower prior year value educational prerogative for their assistance with Medicaid reimbursement. School committee other expenses, minutes for the September nineteenth meeting, legal counselor, monthly retainer, office supplies, four hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cents to WB Mason. Special education contracted services to James Levine and Barbara Morris, copier lease of four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Transportation, eleven thousand seven hundred twelve dollars and sixty cents to Cosmeskus for our monthly transportation expense, and acquisition of new equipment, four hundred and ten dollars to Janko. Those are all of the expenses. We also have the salary expenditures and the Union Twenty-Eight ones, and if you've got specific questions about any line, I can answer them at this time.
I have two questions about the budget.
This year's budget or next year's?
This year's.
Okay.
As of the, as of ten thirty-one. So you have, for some reason, the pre-K teacher salary is separated out from the rest of the regular ed salaries, which is curious why that is, and then there's no actual budget, but we've been expending money out of it.
So it's usually a placeholder, so payroll may take it from one place, but until we receive our grants, and we start to put those positions into grant allocations and preschool revolving fund, and that's up these first couple of months, things may be coming out of places that it will not come out of in the next couple of months. So it's sort of a placeholder for now, until the grants come in and we're able to put everyone in the proper places.
So this is one salary, based on the amount of money that is in there, so why is only one pre-K teacher salary separated out?
The other is probably just out of the general teachers line, and it's just a temporary placeholder.
Right, so why is one teacher in the general ed and one teacher out?
One teacher was probably already in the system as a general ed, and then the next one that was hired, that will be placed into another line, is just in that temporary placeholder.
It's what? Say the last part again?
It's just in that temporary placeholder account for now.
Okay, so I guess what I'm not understanding is why does there need to be a temporary placeholder? Why is that just not rolled into the general education fund? General, uh, let me just make sure I call it the right thing. The teacher, general teacher fund line.
I mean, it could be.
Going to stumble over that.
It could be. Right now, it's in the preschool teacher line, but it could be in the general teacher line.
Is it for reporting purposes, or for...
No, it's just temporary purposes until we receive our grants, and we start to place salaries into the accounts that they belong in for the year.
So part of this person, this position salary, you're saying is going to be, is going to be paid for by grants?
No, it'll probably all get moved into the preschool revolving fund, but all of that happens when we receive our grants and we're able to place people into their...
So we have enough in the preschool revolving fund to spend out an entire teacher's salary?
Usually a partial of a teacher's salary. It had to look into specifically how much of it, but it will get moved in the next month or two, when we have, receive the grants and start placing them into grants and revolvings. They're just not there yet.
Okay, let me ask my second question. The specialist teacher sped line is overspent. Can you kind of give us a sense of why it is that it's overspent already?
Well, it's not overspent, it's, the budget balance is in a deficit because of the amount that we have, the amount of teachers we have in that line is with what they have spent, and then what's encumbered for the rest of their salary would put us over, but at least one of those teachers will go into a grant when we receive that grant, and they'll move out of that line into a grant line.
Okay, so when do you think these grants are coming in?
We don't know at this point. It's in sometime in the fall. I don't, I don't know the timeline.
Okay, all right, we'll just watch that line then.
Is that because the grant money couldn't be put into that line? We don't have the grant yet, we haven't received the money, so we have a grant line in our three thou, our two thousands, but we can't start paying for a teacher's salary out of that line until we receive approval, and then we have the grant money.
Okay.
So for the beginning of the year, they stay in the general teachers line, and then when we receive it, we move not just what's left of their salary, but all of the year. We can move any teacher, we could move in June, we could move the entire teacher's salary for the entire year into that line.
Okay. Opposed to moving the grants into the teacher line?
Couldn't you have to keep that? Yeah, now we have to. So from the request that was made earlier, knowing that teachers are paid from all over the place, would you be able to, is it, let me think about this, would you be able to easily say, okay, this line is paying for these positions, this line is paying for these positions, like you can pull that information, if that was something that we were posted? Yeah, so I've actually already sent it to Mark and Elizabeth, what our general outline is for those positions.
Okay, so you're confident that both the pre-K teacher salary line and the special teachers, the specialist teacher sped line is going to be fully funded?
Yes.
Okay. Those are my questions. Anything else?
I'm going backwards a little bit, because I just want to make sure I understood you correctly. When you sent us this report, it said that we were decreased by one point zero one, but since then, it's now increased to twenty-five point zero one.
Since then, we've identified one student that left one district, and that student has recalibrated the entire thing.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly, and then... Perfect, that works. And then with the Improving Ventilation and Air Quality Grant, do they tell us who we have to use for the feasibility study? Like, what does that, like, process look like?
So it's a good question. So that amount will be under ten thousand dollars, but we will be reaching out to several contacts to see who's able to provide a feasibility study and what the quotes are for that. And so then we'll just make a determination of who will do the feasibility study.
And is there a timeline that we have on that, ten, or hundred thousand?
Yes, so that will need to be expended by the end of the fiscal year, so by June thirtieth. So we are always kind of mindful of, there's, you know, last year, we ran into, there was, a lot of districts faced some delays in getting people to contract these services, and then also for delays in shipping of the materials, and so we would like to get on this as soon as possible. So we are, we identified that June thirtieth does seem like a long way away, especially when you're a teacher, but it is right around the corner for us.
And I'm assuming with that, will, even though this says, like, improving ventilation and air quality, we can include some of the heating, cooling, distribution issues that they're having?
Right now, it is, like, really focused on the rooftop units.
Okay.
It's a feasibility study, and that may come up with other components that we can amend, but it's mostly focused on the rooftop units. When we talked about mini splits, that's another interesting idea, where we can see what sort of the rebates and the costs of those would be, especially when I think of some of the colder rooms in the building, whether that would be something that, combined with this grant, we could utilize both.
Okay, so the essential goal at the end of this is to have an efficient heating and cooling throughout the whole building that is going to be controlled, and one building's not going to be a hundred degrees, where the other's fifty?
No, and I monitored a lot last year in Eric's computer, he has the temperature of every room in the building. There were two that were a lot cooler than the rest, you know, the music room is very cool, and so if there's something that we can do to upgrade the entire system, but we're still finding that we need to have additional supports for the heating system, then we're open to any idea and possibility.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, principals report.
I have a statement to read from Principal Crane, and I will be reporting for Principal Crane. Relational trust between and among the faculty and staff of an elementary school is the single most important factor in the academic and social growth of the school. When students and families see civility and respect modeled in the school, that civility and respect can more easily become... and respect can more easily become the culture of the school and the school community. The work that we are doing at the Irving Elementary School, creating strong social community norms and building relational trust, was undermined by the school committee's public and disrespectful behavior towards me at the September meeting. It was an embarrassment not just to me, but to the entire school community. In my absence this evening, I have asked Superintendent Culkin to present my principal's report for October. So I can present David's report, and any questions you have, I can bring back to Principal Crane. You can see the enrollment as of October third, there's a hundred and twenty-three students total. The calendar events, November ninth will be the Veterans Day Assembly, beginning at ten a.m. November fourteenth through the sixteenth, our conferences at Irving. We'd like to welcome back to Irving our returning school psychologist, Jordan Delmonte. And we also want to welcome to our school our new preschool teacher, Kristen Lilly, our new library media specialist, Jessica Morris, and our new ELL educator, Jackie LaFrance. Welcome to all, and we're glad you're here. On Wednesday, October fourth, we welcomed families to our Irving Elementary School Open House, and it was very successful. Many families joined us for the evening. It was a wonderful opportunity for me, Principal Crane, to meet the families of the children with whom I have spent the first six weeks of school. I also enjoyed the presence of many former Irving Elementary students who had come to check in with former teachers. It was a very celebratory event, and I believe that families left with a greater sense of what was happening in individual classrooms. Picture Day was also a recent event, and according to Principal Crane, there were many well-dressed children in our school on this day. We had a virtual presentation on strategies and response actions by the Sheriff's Department, and the lockdown drill was scheduled for Thursday, October fifth. Our curriculum day was October sixth. The entire staff came to Chutesbury for our very first curriculum day of the year, and we had workshops and meetings planned for the day. Principal Crane, at the time of this report, was looking forward to his first off-site professional learning opportunity. We also are doing literacy walkthroughs across Union Twenty-Eight, and educators and administrators from other schools in the union visited Irving for a walkthrough of classrooms as Irving began the implementation of their new literacy curriculum, which is based on the concepts of the science of reading. Principal Crane offers thanks to Lindsay Rodriguez, who is our Director of Curriculum Instruction, and also to our reading specialists, Melissa Mizella and Wendy Arnold, for their work with the students as they help transition our classroom teachers into the use of the new curriculum. It's a really tremendous learning step for the elementary school to undertake, so Principal Crane wants to thank everyone. He has completed interviewing for the four paraprofessional vacancies, and they are offering positions to the successful candidates as of the week of October third. Some works in progress, the current Irving Elementary School handbook is in need of some text revision in order to bring it into alignment with best practices. And there will be a school-based committee that will be looking at the document, and where necessary, will propose specific changes. And the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four School Improvement Plan is also a work in progress. The literacy and math goals that are listed below will need to be strengthened with specific materials, methodologies, and timelines, and we will continue to add a social-emotional learning goal as part of the completed plan. And as you can see, the transition plan, since we have an interim principal for the School Improvement Plan, have math goals and literacy goals. And that is Principal Crane's statement and report this evening.
Have those two preschool students been enrolled in the program?
As far as I know, yes, but I can certainly get that answer from Principal Crane.
And have the pair, have any paraprofessionals accepted positions? This was, as you noted, this was the week of October third, so I believe we have recently hired three paraprofessionals, three?
Two, three of them have already filled out their paperwork, so yes.
We're in the process of three.
Well, I mean, yes, on our end, so two full-time and one part-time.
Okay.
With the revisions being worked on, with the school handbook, um, will that be presented to us at our November meeting?
It will be presented at a future meeting. We're hopeful that it is November, but I don't know how long the process is going to take. I certainly can ask Principal Crane.
Okay, and then I know there's been a lot of information put out there for parents to join the, I'm probably gonna call it something wrong, but the school council, I'll call it. So just any update regarding enrollment of that, how that's going, would be great. And then the other update that I was gonna request and, and Mark, when you mentioned that, it, it made me think of it again. Can we get an, is it the T. LTC Learning Center?
LSC.
Learning Support Center, LSC. So if we could get an update, if that, on the LSC, if that is happening?
It's not happening. It's not in the budget for this year. So that could be part of budget planning.
Okay.
The particular thing that you asked about, um, the school did receive a sizable increase to the budget at the end of the, for this coming year. So is there not additional funds with the increase that was made, the four-point-whatever million, to have the program that you're looking at? And then you've got additional rural aid you weren't counting on? So that would be an additional, well, let's see, was it an increase of almost thirty thousand that you got from rural aid?
Thirty-five thousand.
Right, so I'm just saying, is it conceivable that you could look in the existing budget with the money that you got that you weren't expecting from rural aid and the funds that the taxpayers were nice enough to give you at the annual town meeting and find money for this program that you obviously are all concerned about?
I guess we could look at the budget, but we also had to hire an ESL teacher. That was not planned. We had students move in who required English Language Learner Services.
I understand that. I'm just saying, since we received thirty-five thousand dollars, we weren't anticipating out of rural aid, if there was a way to look to see if you could start that program that you guys are interested in. That's all.
I think that's a good point.
Wasn't the thirty-five thousand dollar increase, it was thirty-five thousand dollars total?
Last year, we received twelve thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. It's just a difference between the two.
Right, well, instead of thirty-five, what was that, twenty-something?
A twenty-three.
We also have SOR money that, that is gonna be available to us because we don't have the adjustment counselor slash school psychologist.
Our Director of Student Support Services, Karina Whistlow, is working with Principal Crane to look at other options for social-emotional learning support, help via some contracted services, since there are no candidates that are viable for that position.
Okay, but still, we have September and October's salary, if you will, that has not been spent out of that.
Yet.
So I think, to Jackie's point, we do seem like we have some pockets of money here and there that we should be looking into putting that program back in. It fit the needs of, you know, several students. Certainly sounds like the needs are still in the school and could benefit from that program. And I would, I would argue that it's certainly social-emotional learning happening in the LSC, so I think that's something that we should be definitely looking into.
Yeah, I just wanna make it clear that we were told multiple times that that was in the budget and that was budgeted for, and that was happening this year.
I, I did not say it was in the budget. I know the previous principal may have spoken to it, but Caitlin, you could maybe speak to the budget, because that was not information that came from Caitlin or I.
It was never in the budget for this year. And when the question was asked, the previous principal said that there was funding available. What funding she was thinking of, I don't know, but it was, could have been a grant funding or SOR or manipulation of any of those, but it was not in the general budget, which is the only information I know.
So I'll take exception to that, because I actually asked the question directly to the former principal. I said, is it in the budget? And she, that, the response I received was, yes, it was in the budget, so.
Just, it, it sounds like, really, all we're asking is to look and see whether it's possible.
Which is what I, I did say we would look into that.
Yeah, and that seems like what we need at this point. And then we can come back and say, there is money or there isn't. So let's just say, we're gonna look into it.
Sounds great, and we, Principal Crane and I have had multiple conversations about that.
So could we have that, maybe we'll make a decision on it next, next meeting, just say, we'll look at it and we'll get some kind of an answer.
Right, so for November's meeting, we'll have an update regarding the Learning Support Center.
And if we can't do it, we can't do it.
And funding for it. And funding for it.
Um, just because the draft, the first draft of the budget is due by the next meeting, is this something you would like me to put into the FY twenty-five budget?
Oh, you mean, funding for the LSC for the future? Yeah, okay, I mean, my answer is yes.
Okay. I think the need is still there. It's not just this issue.
I know, I know, I love it.
I think I can provide some clarity, though I'm not part of the hiring process or anything. I do believe that it was put out multiple times, a request for a behaviorist, somebody to run that position, and there were never any specifics for it. And my understanding is that Principal may be looking at maybe calling it something different or having a different approach, bringing in another adjustment counselor or something like that. It's still on the agenda, it just may look different. That's my understanding, if that helps clarify.
Thank you.
All right, Budget and Personnel Committee report, is there any? Uh, Union Twenty-Eight Committee Report, next meeting, November twentieth? All right, so old business, any old business that we need to discuss?
The members of the Subcommittee to Investigate, Retiring or Remaining in Union Twenty-Eight?
That's new business, but that's okay.
Oh, you're right, that's skipping old business.
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't any before we moved on. Okay, go ahead.
All right, so the following people have volunteered, Kelly Line, Melanie Burnett, Amy Wood, Daniel Hemmott, and Lori Hale, and Catherine Gardett. And if we vote these people in, then they need to go and get sworn in, and then we need to set up a meeting time and fight up tasks and get going.
Get going, excellent.
Can I make a motion to, uh, School Committee, vote all those members in?
I'll second that. Any issues? And then, of course, you're, you're the chair of the-
Yeah, I want thirty-two.
Nice, nice of you to take that on. That's a big, big project. Okay, any other discussion about that? All right, all in favor?
All right.
Excellent. So you let those people know to head over to the Town Hall and get sworn in. Perfect. Okay, policy review and update. So first read on policy.
I have a power board.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over that, I apologize.
Um, so I was sent the power board. Um, the first meeting, oh, of course, it's on here, but our first meeting was the first Monday of October at seven o'clock, and it was virtual. There was a good attendance, and it went for like the full hour, 'cause we had so much to talk about, which was great. Uh, so we welcome new members at the first meeting of the year. Uh, students are completing their artwork for the original works fundraiser. We are having a bingo for books night on Thursday, November second, at five-thirty, so five-thirty to six-thirty, and the plan is to have pizza and snacks there, along with some fun bingo games. That announcement did just go out on Class Dodo today to parents as well, so that is available. The Irving Apparel Store will be opening at the beginning of November, and we were looking at getting, I think, in the store was still like summer, spring options, we were looking at getting, um, fall/winter options back and available, so that orders can be placed and be delivered in time for the holidays. We are in the process of planning a cash calendar raffle as another fundraiser. We are talking about bringing back the cookie exchange. Um, this is dependent on the winter concert availability, building stuff, but it is a topic of conversation. And then our next meeting is going to be Monday, November sixth, at seven p.m. That is all I have.
And is that the impression or virtual?
I'm guessing it'll be virtual again, yeah. A link was sent out on Class Dodo. And, Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but Brittany said that if anyone wanted the invites like directly onto their like Google Calendar, they could email her and she can add them, and then it would just be there. Okay. So if there is anyone interested, and I think like the biggest thing is, I know sometimes commitments or that meeting every month might seem a little intimidating, and so we really just wanna share and welcome anyone that wants to come to any of the meetings. So if you're able to make one or two a year, that's absolutely more than welcome. If there are certain fundraiser ideas or certain parts of the year where there are certain things going on that you want to be a part of and can't attend a meeting, definitely reach out, but everyone is welcome in the more, more the merrier, so it was good.
Okay, sorry, but, um, now we're up to the policy review and update. So first read on policy BDFA, which is School Council's, and BDFA, School Improvement Plan. It's the first read, so. That's it, yep, dza, yep, switching pages. And then we will be going into executive session, not to return to open session, in accordance with open meeting law, chapter thirty, A, section twenty-one. A, we'll move into executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, and we are voting on executive session meetings, uh, minutes, excuse me, but we will not return to open meeting, open session. Um, our next school committee meeting is Tuesday, November twenty-first, at seven p.m. The Irving Policy Committee meets right before that at six-thirty p.m.
Could I recommend that the meeting date for our next meeting be posted on the town calendar, it's the date, time, and location? Well, we already know what it is. It can get put out there immediately, not wait for one week beforehand. My motivation is simply that I've been asked by a number of people, when's the next meeting? When's the next meeting? And, you know, you go and look on the calendar and it's not there. So we don't have to wait for the agenda to come out for that to happen.
Sure, I can ask you to do that. In general, though, just so people are aware, it's generally the third Tuesday of the month. There are a couple of months where that's different because of either a holiday or a school vacation, but generally speaking, third Tuesday of the month, seven o'clock, always here. I can't recall that we've ever met anywhere else.
Pam doesn't post the meeting on the town calendar, so it would have to be someone on the town side. She just sends the agenda.
Yeah, she'll, she sends it over to-
But she doesn't have the agenda until the week before, so it would have to be someone at the town that would post the dates.
Right, yep, 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 we're just, yep. The agenda will come out after, after that, but you want it on the calendar.
Yeah.
Yeah, hang on a second.
Yes.
Yeah, we can do that. Yes, and Pam has that. She has that list already created. We've already talked about it, so, yeah, we can do that. Yep, she has that. Again, with the exception, there's a couple of months, there's a little asterisk, because we have to change the date and we haven't set the date yet, so knowing that, all of them that are otherwise, we will get that sent over. Okay, so we have to roll call vote out, and then you guys can go home. So make a motion to end open session to go into executive session. So, make a motion to, uh, end open session to go into executive session. You have to roll call vote, do you want to start at that end?
Hi, Sean.
Be a little aye. Bailey, aye. Thank you, everybody, for coming.